Good evening and welcome to the City of Topeka Planning Commission meeting. We are a commission appointed by the mayor and city council to plan for the orderly growth and development of the community, to hold public hearings and to make recommendations to the city council on planning items. Please note, the city council rules state that the public hearings for planning cases shall be conducted solely by the planning commission. No additional public hearings will be conducted by the city council. Tonight's cases are tentatively scheduled to be heard by the city council next month. Agendas can be found at topeka.org. For cases that require public hearings, the procedure will be as follows. First, the planning staff will summarize the case. Next, we will hear from the applicant or the representative. Then we will receive public testimony. Public comments should be addressed solely to the chair and are limited to four minutes. Amanda, please take the role. Chris, Amanda? Threw me off.
If it's appropriate, it might be nice for me to introduce Amanda really quickly.
Yes, please.
Yeah, yeah, of course. So, super excited to have Amanda join us. This is her first day as serving as our administrative officer, so first day and planning commission, taking minutes and doing role, so we're really throwing her in.
Welcome.
Hi, thank you. Commissioner Dean is present. Commissioner Herron is present.
I'll let you just read their name and then they'll say "present" as well. Just so you... No, you're good, you're good.
Mr. Preisner?
Present.
Commissioner Calp?
Here.
Commissioner Nager?
Here.
Commissioner Pearson?
Here.
Commissioner Tobin?
Here.
Commissioner Warner?
Here.
And then I'll give you guys a chance to speak. Commissioner Dean?
Present.
Okay. Everybody that's present accounted for, which leaves us eight present for quorum.
Thank you. Next, the approval of minutes from March 20, 2023.
Commissioner Dean?
Yes.
Do you approve the minutes?
We'll, uh, we'll put it out here for someone. We'll talk about it and then have a motion.
I apologize.
No problem. You're good.
Mr. Chairman, I would move adoption of the minutes as submitted by staff.
Do you have a second?
I second it. Commissioner Pearson?
Thank you. Amanda, would you like to please take the role?
Commissioner Dean?
Aye.
Commissioner Herron?
Upstayed.
Commissioner Calp?
Yes, aye.
Commissioner Nager?
Aye.
Commissioner Pearson?
Aye.
Commissioner Tobin?
Aye.
And Commissioner Warner?
Aye.
It appears that the minutes were passed for the previous meeting, seven zero.
Thank you. Next, move on to declaration of conflict of interest, ex parte communications by members of the commissioner staff. I am going to step out for item number two, PUD 23-03. Are there any other conflicts? That being the case, we'll start with action item number one, public hearing of Z23-08 by Washburn Avenue, Kansas LLC. Staff?
Thank you, Commissioner Dean. This will be a rezoning located at 1404 Southwest 17th Street. The rezoning is from C2 Commercial District to X1 Mixed Use District. The rezoning is going to allow for expansion and reuse of the existing building and also to lessen, basically to lessen the rear setback requirements that they need. With this rezoning, it's not going to be changing the land use or switching it from the commercial and retail that has been at that site for decades now. The commercial and retail use is still going to remain the same. 1404 Southwest 17th Street, that's the parcel address. It's not for the whole entire... The rezoning is not for the entire parcel. It's just for that existing building to the east of the former gas station. Technically, the rezoning will be on lots 228 through lots 238 of the Byron Place subdivision on approximately .46 acres in size. As you can see here, so the former gas station will remain C2 Commercial. Getting into the zoning map here a little bit, in this neighborhood, in this area at 17th and Washburn, you do see a lot of diverse mix of zoning here. So on the north, you have a lot of multifamily residential zoning. South, more residential zoning with commercial on the southeast corner of 17th and Washburn there. To the east is more residential zoning, the M12 Family Dwelling District. And to the west, you have the College Hills Planned Unit Development, Plan Unit Development, PUD, which allows for M2 and C2 Commercial District zoning. Future land use. So, this has, this involves the Central Park Neighborhood Plan along with Chesney Park Neighborhood Plan and the Land Use Growth Management Plan as well. For the subject property, the future land use is designated as mixed use, which is what they call in the Central Park Plan is a mix of housing, commercial, and employment, balanced mix of land uses in an efficient and compact manner. So again, the X1 zoning, it's not going to change the land use. It's going to still, it will still remain commercial and retail, which is allowed in X1. But yeah, the future land use for that area is mixed use. You also see that it's surrounded by residential, urban suburban, low-density residential, and of course, Washburn University to the southwest as well. So, the proposed zoning of X1, it conforms with the existing neighborhood plans that we have and the Land Use Growth Management Plan. The land use, again, it's not changing. This is to allow for, in addition to the building, and to allow for lesser setbacks. And with that, staff is recommending approval of the rezoning case. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sharp. Are there any questions for staff from commissioners?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Calp?
Just one quick question. I know that the staff report says that the traffic engineer didn't identify any issues. Well, there, I guess it'd be a continuation of both right and left turns into and off of the property. That street, the proximity to the intersection gets crowded during certain times of the day.
That, the traffic study will be done at the, during like the building permit phase, correct?
So, there's no traffic study required for a rezone typically?
Right.
If there, if a traffic study is warranted, it's because there's an anticipated increase in traffic resulting from a proposed development. That's kind of a threshold of 10%, like a 10% increase?
I would imagine the applicant is assuming or believing there'll be an increase of traffic. And I understand traffic study isn't called for under the regs, but, so the short answer is that there'll be both right and left turns into and out of the property.
We don't anticipate any changes as a result of this.
I'm sorry, Mike, what?
We don't anticipate any changes in the, in the access. If, if the commission has a concern about it, we can raise it with the traffic engineers as it moves forward, and it'll be their decision as to whether they'll require some kind of traffic study or any changes. And if you, the commission would like us to do that, we can do that. We can express that concern.
Well, I don't know if, is there any concern other than mine? It's really just a question. I've just, I've seen people exit out of the existing property and going across the lanes.
Okay.
Turning left across traffic and...
Okay.
Yeah, we'll look at it.
I, you know, this is going from retail to retail essentially, before there was a restaurant there.
Right.
So it's hard to, you know, if business is successful, they're going to have more traffic. So, but it's hard for the traffic engineer to determine that on that basis, but we can share that with them. I mean, if there's a concern with traffic safety now, they can look at it and something could be warranted regardless of any proposed development.
Well, and you've answered the question. The traffic engineer certainly looked at how, how traffic would enter and exit the property and, and the engineer said no issue.
They've had the opportunity to comment on it and they haven't.
Okay, thank you. Well, one other thing, Mike, that includes truck deliveries onto the property. That would take access off of 17th Street.
I believe, I actually don't know if most truck deliveries would go from the front or the rear, because they do have an alley in the back, but nothing, unless something's done now, they would still be able to deliver in the front.
I will ask the applicant then.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions for the staff? If not, we'll move on. Is there a representative of the owner here to speak tonight?
Good evening. Joshua Blinsky with SBB Engineering. Excuse me, I'm the representative for the owner. None of them have attended tonight, so I'll be taking all the questions I have to answer the traffic question that was brought up in the...
Sorry, could you speak up?
Sorry. As far as the traffic question that was brought up in the pre-application meeting, and they are in discussions with the City of Topeka, and it, it will actually come up in the site plan review process as well for the traffic engineer to make any comments. We'll be providing some traffic patterns and if there are truck access to the site showing those turning movements and the like, so there'll be plenty of, plenty of time for the traffic engineer to make any comments or changes.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant? Thank you. Next, we'll get into public, oh, thank you. In the public testimony, you'll have four minutes per person. If you're interested in speaking, come up to the podium. If none are interested, we'll move, close the public testimony and move on to discussion by commissioners. Any discussion on this item? And if not, we'll be open for a motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I move that we approve the staff recommendations on the changes.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you. It's moved and seconded. Any discussions on the motion?
Commissioner Preisner? Do you, how do you vote?
Yep, ready for a vote.
You.
Aye.
Commissioner Calp?
Aye.
Commissioner Nager?
Aye.
Commissioner Pearson?
Aye.
Commissioner Tobin?
Aye.
And Commissioner Warner?
Aye.
At a vote of six zero, motion passes.
Okay. Thank you. Next item is public hearing of PUD 23-03, Topeka Independent Living Resource Center. You do, you know, hand it over to Ms. Pearson.
All right. As you said, the next action is PUD 23-03, Topeka Independent Living Resource Center, staff presentation. Are you ready? Almost.
Need to get used to this remote. So I'll be giving this presentation. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you.
If I can get to the right... Well, I'm trying to get it to the first... There.
There you go.
That's where I want it to be. So, this is a application to rezone the property from R1 to Plan Unit Development for Offices and Operations of the Topeka Independent Living Resource Center, or referred to as Tilleric. I think I'm pronouncing that how it's pronounced, Tilleric. So this is a Plan Unit Development without a master plan, and the zoning regulations allow for that as long as conditions can be established and can be adopted with the ordinance. There's no reason to do a master plan for this project. No variances are associated with this PUD. The location is 1921 Southeast Indiana Street. It's on five acres of property. Staff is recommending approval, subject to conditions, with the land use limited to R1 uses and Tilleric's intended use. So this is previously the site of a middle school and later a church. Church was operated as a social outreach and community support program out of the site, and schools and churches are permitted uses in R1 zoning. The proposed use is not a permitted use under R1 zoning, so it requires the rezoning. The property is surrounded by detached single-family homes and the Washburn Institute of Technologies Eastern Campus to the south. Want to explain something. In the staff report, in the beginning of it, it says that the requested rezone was PUD with ONI3 uses. That was in the application. After staff reviewed the application, it was determined that it would be better and it would still meet the needs of the applicant if the PUD was not, did not open it up to all ONI3 uses, because there are uses under the ONI3 zone that probably would not be good at this location, could create some compatibility issues with neighboring uses. And so, the recommendation is that it be limited to just uses that are consistent with what Tilleric wants to do. And, and there's a, attached to the staff report, there's a statement of operations, and you can read that. The first condition in the recommendation refers to that statement of operations, and then there are several other conditions on top of that. So the, the Central Highland Park Neighborhood Plan, which is essentially the comprehensive plan as it applies to this area, identifies this area for an institutional use as a future land use. The recommended zoning is consistent with the neighborhood plan. It allows the adaptive reuse of this building, which is preferred to letting the building sit vacant, and it provides an appropriate transition between a more intensive use and So just summarizing the recommendation and the, and the conditions, again, it references the statement of operations. All the use and dimensional standards applicable to R1 zoning will apply, except as stated in these conditions. One of the elements of the proposal is to allow for a garden on the site, on the north side of the site. Some of the language in the application refers to this as a community garden, but it's really more like an accessory use to this, to this, to the primary use, which is, which is the administrative offices and operations for, for Tilleric. Some of the other conditions, outdoor storage of materials or inoperable vehicles are not There's a parking-related condition that requires, that will require them to stripe additional parking stalls, but this should easily be accommodated with the paving that's on the site. Any expansion of the parking areas will be, require permits, and we will review a site plan at that time if it was, if, if they decide they want to expand the parking area. Existing mature and healthy trees on the property are to be maintained and preserved unless replaced with an equivalency of landscaping based on species, quantity, current size, and size of maturity. That was something that was brought up at the neighborhood information meeting. There was a neighborhood information meeting held, by the way, for this project. About three or four neighbors attended that meeting and spoke, and all expressed general support of what the applicant is proposing to do. And that concludes my presentation. You happy to answer any questions?
Are there any questions? Are there any questions for staff? Yes, Commissioner.
There was some mention in the staff provided to us that there might be a requirement of a subdivision plat. I guess like what determines that? Like, does this need that?
So, Commissioner, in our, in our development code, there's a requirement that before you get a building permit, you're required to get the property, property platted, and there are some exceptions to that. We don't anticipate that a subdivision plat is going to be required for this because of the scope of the project, but if that scope changes, potentially that's a requirement. We do not anticipate that.
All right. Makes sense. Thanks.
Thank you.
I did have a, I did have a clarification I wanted you to make. Up there, it says that outdoor storage of materials or vehicles is not permitted, but in the written document, it says inoperable vehicles. Which one is it?
It's intended to mean inoperable. That's really a typo.
All right. I just wanted to make sure.
I mean, long-term storage of operable vehicles is not really encouraged either, but...
Okay.
Yeah, the concern is that the nature of the use could change. It involves some vocational training and that kind of thing, and so that was kind of a way to just avert that risk of something like that happening.
I guess I, well, now that you mentioned that, I guess a definition of that, long-term versus short-term? I mean, I'm assuming with their usage that there will be extra vehicles on the property, or maybe I'm wrong about that. I don't know. So, in, in one hand, you said long-term, and then so, which one is it?
Okay. Let me read the... So what's in the staff report is correct. Outdoor storage of materials or inoperable vehicles are not permitted.
Okay.
Outdoor storage of materials or inoperable vehicles is not permitted. That's, that's specifically what the recommendation is.
Okay.
It's just incorrect on the slide.
All right. Again, just wanted the clarification to be sure.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman? Thank you. Mike, two things real quick. I want to, you may have covered this on the off-street parking. The requirement here, if this is approved, they required 56 parking stalls. The reference in the staff report to 80, a total of 80, that's self-inflicted by the applicant, right? They're not obliged. The, the heading, staff recommendation says 56. That's, that's the number they have to be.
Correct. So the recommendation does not require them to have 80 stalls. They, they provide us with a parking plan. We didn't want to, we didn't want to tie them to that. We didn't even attach it here because it was really just for discussion. We didn't want that to be misconstrued as a plan that they were going to develop. I think once they start looking at that, chances are they're going to find that creating that many parking stalls is more difficult and more costly than they anticipate, and they really don't need that many. And in fact, the condition allows them to have a reduction below 56 if they provide additional information.
Mike, the other, thank you for that. The other thing is about the community garden. I was very surprised to see that's something that the city recognizes as a land use and regulates as a land use. And that's, there's no reference to the city code in here, but there, if I wanted to have a community garden in my backyard in an R1 district, I couldn't do it without city permit. Is that right?
Yeah, community garden is different than an accessory garden. So, yeah, if you're referring to a community garden, our code treats that as a principal use. So you have a bare piece of ground and you put a garden on it. Someone having a garden in their backyard is just an accessory use. And so, we wanted to be clear that we're talking about an accessory garden. There was some intent expressed at the neighborhood information meeting by the applicant that they could open that up to the neighbors in the neighborhood. That's okay. There, I don't think there is any concern about that, but it's really intended to be...
I appreciate that. It's just, if you put another marker down at that point in time when we take a look at possible amendments to the zoning code, I, it just, it doesn't seem rational to me to, to, to have community gardens. You know, it's, it's one thing if it's a retail operation, I suppose, but if it's just a community garden, that does not seem to be a land use that the city should be regulating, to me.
Yeah, so Commissioner Calp, it was probably about six years ago now, it was probably about eight years ago, actually.
Yeah, don't throw history at me, Mike.
Yeah. It was a while ago. There was kind of this recognition in the, nationally, that cities should allow people to grow food, and there should be more and more gardens, and so the city responded by allowing, or adding that to the land use table and providing some flexibility to do that as a principal use. And it does require a, there are standards that apply, and it does require a permit, an administrative permit.
Okay. I'm not satisfied, Mike, but I appreciate the answer.
Yeah, maybe I can get some clarification from you after the meeting, and, and that's something we can look at. We, we, as you know, we occasionally, every few years, do a code update, and that's something we could look at when we do that.
But this applicant's okay. This applicant's got it, got it in writing, so there's no, no issue here today for this applicant.
Okay.
For me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Is anyone from that organization here tonight?
Joshua Blinsky with SBB Engineering. Again, yep, I'm the representative for the applicant here, and I also have Amy Hyden. She's the executive director of TILRC to say a few words about the project.
I want to thank the commission for, for entertaining our application, and also, I think there was a mention that there had been a neighborhood meeting, and some of the neighbors have joined us here this evening, so we're super actually excited about that, and want to thank them for taking out their time and their interest in the project. So, this is actually, I, I'm the executive director of the Topeka Independent Living Resource Center. We are a disability-owned and operated, not-for-profit organization that's been here in the community since October of 1980. We've lived in a number of different locations and currently live at Fifth and Jackson in downtown Topeka. And so, you know, honestly, you know, it's, it is, it's an interesting, it's been kind of one of the interesting conversations that we had at the earlier neighborhood meeting, because quite frankly, the use that we're intending to deploy in terms of moving our operations from the core of downtown Topeka where people don't actually live... operations from the core of downtown Topeka, where people don't actually live, to, you know, a neighborhood in the city where people actually do live and look for services, is not that great, it's actually fundamentally not a difference at all in what the previous owners of this building had done when the building was, was operating sort of there. And so, and so as an organization, we aren't, we will be operating, not just our administrative offices, but the independent living skills, services that we provide. We are the assistive technology site for northeast Kansas, so we have all kinds of durable medical equipment, augmented assistive communication devices, telephones with large, large buttons, and, and really what we were looking for, aside from being where people that need services are located, is we really were looking for a space that was more, more usable and more compatible and more open to the people that we serve. And this building, it, one of the neighbors, I think, actually is a graduate of the school. And when I first started working for the agency, Topeka Independent Living Resource Center, in the 1990s, I actually had clients, families that I represented, who their families were going to the school as well, and so we have kind of a long history and connection to this community and to this neighborhood. And the space, quite frankly, is, is much more usable for our purposes. It gives us the opportunity to look at sort of expanding our operations and incorporating some things that would include accessible gardening spaces so that people could come in and have, you know, access to fresh fruits and vegetables in their neighborhood. Not on, you know, not on a large scale, I save that for my own farm, but certainly have a food pantry, you know, again, a lot of the services that have existed in the past but haven't, haven't been there as the building has fallen into disuse. So, you know, really, the intention is to take the space as it exists. We have no intention to, it, it already is, trust me, much more building than I think any single organization needs, and so there's not really any intention to expand the operations, but simply to use the space that's there to create a more accessible community opportunity for folks in that area to meet their needs in, in a very sort of peer-based way, in a way that affords more space, quite frankly, and opportunity for people to do the things that they need to do, to access the resources that they need to access, than it is an opportunity to expand our programming or to build, build an empire. We really don't, we want to build a community in a neighborhood, and we want to build a space that supports people with disabilities to live in our community and remain there. So, that's, we're certainly willing to answer any questions.
Does anyone have any questions? Well, Commissioner Nager.
I appreciate, it sounds like a good organization and very meaningful work, and I imagine your assessment of like switching from the core of downtown to this neighborhood is probably appropriate and better suited for you guys integrating. I do want to, a very minor point, I don't mean to blow it up, but you said something about the core of downtown not being somewhere, some, a place where people live. I actually happen to live in the core of downtown. Love it very much. I have a great relationship with my other residential neighbors. Like I said, not key to this at all, but just...
No, no, I appreciate that. I, I should have clarified. The people who we serve, the folks who come to us for services, don't, don't exist. And, and quite frankly, the folks that are looking at purchasing the building that we're currently in are looking to deploy more neighbors for you downtown, so...
Does anyone else have questions? Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any public testimony? And just a friendly reminder, you have four minutes.
Okay, we live, my name is Carol Brown. I live in 1928 southeast Washington with the graduate from Highland Park Elementary School, not middle school, as did our children. So we've lived there a long time. We're fully supportive of TILRIC coming in. We have no concerns. We had a lot of concerns. One thing I wanted to say, when you have a Zoom meeting and you send the letter out, you need to say, you have to download Zoom, which we were using, but it did not tell the neighbors they had to download Zoom in order to use it. So in future mailings, you need to say, because we're old and we're not good with technology. I wanted, there was a handout here, I don't know if all of you have it, but on the bottom of page four, it says, "The land use goal, protect single-family uses while accommodating commercial office multifamily residential with established higher intensive areas." Now, I'm not concerned about TILRIC. I'm concerned about the planning committee using that little caveat, multifamily residential and established higher intensity areas. Those would be a concern for us, the bottom of page four. Now, on the top of page five, it says, "The guiding principles, single-family residential land use, which is the majority land use in the neighborhood, which in the neighborhood, that's all there is, should remain viable and be protected from encroachment of higher intensity of land uses, particularly within the interior of the neighborhood." I find those confusing. I find, on one hand, you're saying multifamily residential with established higher intensity areas, and then I see that you are wanting to protect our single-family neighborhood. So, I, if TILRIC left in five years, I don't want you to use this zoning to come back and build, I don't know, apartments or a strip mall or something that would not be appropriate. Now, Joshua has told me, strip malls aren't going in there, you know, that it's not commercial use, but what does that mean to you? What does four and five mean to you?
We'll let you use your four minutes and then address your questions. We'll let you use your four minutes and then address your questions.
That's about all I have. I just wanted to, I wanted to stay single-family or institutional. We get along really well with Washman Tech. I just don't want a lot of traffic. I don't want something that's going there at midnight.
Mr. Hall, can you address her concerns?
Yeah, one thing I want to say is, you know, goals and policies and a comprehensive plan, that by itself does not change the land use that's allowed. That requires a change in zoning. So if there's a change in zoning to accommodate higher-density residential, that's not currently zoned in the neighborhood or not currently accommodated by the zoning in the neighborhood, that would have to go through this whole process.
So, R1 does not accommodate higher use, multiple living arrangements, or higher intensity views. The R1 rating that you are giving TILRIC, you are not, that does not approve apartments or multifamily.
Mike, could I make a comment, not to steal your thunder?
Yeah.
But ma'am, the, you know, like, almost anywhere in the country, R1 zoning carries with it churches and schools as permitted uses, and that's what you have here. And you have, you have, so you have an institutional building that is now vacant, correct? And really, the staff report points out, points this out, that it's highly unlikely at that location to have any kind of commercial or any kind of intensive use requiring knocking the building down and, and, this is a reuse, an adaptation of the, of the building, and you started your comments off by saying that you didn't have any problem with...
Right.
With this application, and the scenarios you have about apartment houses and so on are pure speculation, and that would be for another day. But I, I think the points you're raising, you're raising for that kind of land use, there'd be a whole set of other considerations that the planning commission and the planning staff would make about introduction of multifamily at that location. Maybe it would be fine, maybe not, but, but that's not what we have. I think we've got a very, very beneficial reuse of the property that appears to be acceptable to, to you and I hope the other neighbors as well.
So when you look at page seven, that's what we'll be voting on, and it doesn't have anything about multi-use in it.
This may not be appropriate for this meeting, but why does 1921 Indiana own 20th Street from Indiana to Washington? Why is that not a public street? It's got public street markings.
I, you're right, at this point, we're not sure what, this body probably cannot answer that question for you. Perhaps someone and staff can leave some guidance after the meeting?
Okay, I was curious.
Yeah, I'd be happy to, to have a conversation after the meeting with you.
Thank you, and thank you to TILRIC.
Alright. Is there any other public comment? Alright, is there any discussion by the commissioners? Seeing none, I will take a motion.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
You know, I think it's a, it's a very good organization, providing a very valuable service to the community, and I would, my motion is to adopt the staff findings and analysis as our own findings and analysis, and recommend to the city council rezoning from R1 to PUD with the R1 use group.
Can I get someone to second that?
Second it.
Can we get a vote, call for a vote?
Commissioner Dean is abstaining from this vote. Commissioner Preisner?
Aye.
Commissioner Calp?
Aye.
Commissioner Nager?
Aye.
Commissioner Pearson?
Aye.
Commissioner Tobab, Tobivin, Tob, Tobobin, I am sorry.
No, got it. Aye.
Commissioner Warner?
Aye.
At least, the motion passes with six yeses and one abstaining.
Okay, ready for action item number three, 911 Walnut Project Plan. Staff. Commissioners, I'll handle this one, and Riannon will be available for questions as well. So... Okay, so this project relates to the South Topeka Redevelopment District. This was a TIF district created in 2002. Approval of project plans is required to utilize TIF funds within the redevelopment districts. That's what we're looking at tonight. So this particular project is located at Southwest 32nd Terrace and Southwest Topeka Boulevard. This is a commercial redevelopment of this particular site or area. If we go back to that previous slide, I don't think I pointed out, so that's the TIF district, in case some of you aren't familiar with the South Topeka Redevelopment. TIF district, those are the boundaries of it. You can see the old, the previous mall is in there along with this property and, and many others along the South Topeka corridor. Right, so this gives you some idea of the development that will be on that site. The, the Bennigan's is gone, so that combined with the existing use to the west will be removed, and it'll put a new building on that particular portion of the property. And then out front, way out in front of Main Line Printing or the former Gordmans, out by Topeka Boulevard, that will also be a new building on that part of the property as well. So, some more retail-type uses, restaurant uses on this site, which is currently predominantly vacant or parking lots. So the main idea here with the project plans for the planning commission is to review the, the proposed project plan with consistency to the land use and growth management plan. The land use and growth management plan calls this area out as commercial, more particularly sort of a community commercial area. These community commercial areas contain large-scale commercial uses that serve multiple neighborhoods, and they may draw surrounding communities and counties as well, so the South Topeka Boulevard is considered a, a community commercial area, as would be Highway 24 is another one. So the, so the land use, the land use is consistent with the future land use. There's other policies within the growth management plan that are supportive as well, in particular, within, within our existing city limits, our comp plan talks about encouraging infill and redevelopment with, to take advantage of existing urban infrastructure and services, and promotes a range of uses to fit within the overall character of the area. And it also mentions creating some incentives to help with attracting that kind of development within our, that are, that is infill or redevelopment within the city, and the TIF is one of those fiscal incentives. With that, commissioners, I'm pretty sure that's my last slide, staff is recommending approval of the project plan, well, is recommending that the project plan is consistent with the Lugmo, recommends that the planning commission move the approval of the attached resolution, finding that the project plan is consistent with the land use and growth management plan 2040. Thank you. Any questions to staff, by commissioners?
Chairman Dan, just make sure you understand what we're doing and what we're not doing.
Right.
This finding of consistency with the plan, it doesn't wet us to, I mean, there'll still be a rezoning request coming forward to the planning commission at some point in the future.
There won't be. This particular property is zone C4, no, it's on PUD with C4 and also C4, there's C4 zoning. Those uses are consistent with zoning, so any future approvals for that property will be through site planning, traffic impact analysis, those sorts of things.
Will there be a plat?
No, we've platted that property recently. I don't believe we would have to process a plat, but possibly, depending on how things shake out, there would be a, it'd be a minor plat, though, more than likely that this body wouldn't see anyway.
So if this goes forward and, and they proceed to construction, you had a diagram of the parking lot there, and I wasn't quite clear on the configuration, the orientation of it, but during site plan review, you can provide some screening for landscaping?
Right, so landscape standards would apply for new construction, our parking, the stacking for the drive-through, they have to accommodate all the cars on the site, so they don't go out into the, the public rights of way and those sorts of things, so building design will be a part of the, the review in the site planning phase. So yeah, there's a, a whole host of items that we touch on through site planning.
Okay. So once this, if we make a finding of consistency, then that's the last time we see this project.
More than likely.
Unless the project changes somehow.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Is there an applicant representative here to speak on this issue? Does this go through the normal process?
No, no public hearing is required.
So then we guess we just go to discussion by commissioners then?
Discussion and then a vote.
Okay. Any discussion on this matter? I thought I, I thought I read in here there were three proposed buildings. Is that, did I miss that?
Yes, that's, that's correct, yeah. So there's two pad restaurant sites and then a retail center, which you're seeing oriented there is the southern portion of the property, is a retail component as well, and it's for 20, it's roughly 20,000 square feet total.
It just doesn't show on that site plan, or does it? I see two restaurant...
I see two restaurant pad sites. Maybe I'm missing it.
I don't think you are.
I was just curious. I saw the budget's based around three buildings and I just was curious.
Right, so the document would be the thing to pay attention to.
Yes.
Perhaps not the attachment or the exhibit.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? If not, we'd be open for a motion.
Mr. Chair. I'd like to make the motion to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Prisner. Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussions on the motion? If not, would you please take the roll call?
Mr. Dean?
Aye.
Mr. Prisner?
Aye.
Mr. Calp?
Aye.
Mr. Niger?
Aye.
Commissioner Pearson?
Aye.
Commissioner Tobin?
Aye.
Commissioner Warner?
Aye.
Motion passes, seven zero.
Thank you. Next up, communications to the commission.
Commissioners, just a staff update, I think. Since you saw their faces, I thought it would be good to let you know that Ian Treffern, who was our associate planner, has moved on to a different position. And Will H., not Will J., is an intern in our office. You saw him last month, he had his first case. And he will not be here, he's not leaving, he hasn't left yet, but he won't be here by the time of your next meeting and won't be presenting. So he's leaving as well. We will be gaining another intern and we'll be getting her in front of you as soon as we possibly can. And then Annie Driver, who was previously in our office, our planning division is moving back to the planning division, actually as of today. So you will be seeing Annie in the future with some planning cases. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. The cases from last month, did they go through? What happened with those cases?
No, they're on tomorrow night at the governing body, all except Eugene and Paramore. That case had a protest petition that need, that they, those protest petitions typically only need 20% only. That's actually not very easy to get most of the time. They were able to get 60% of the notification area to sign that protest petition. So that will be, we can't do it on tomorrow night because all the council members won't be at that meeting. In order to act on protest petitions, everybody needs to be at the meeting. So that will likely be the first meeting in May that we talk about Eugene and Paramore.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for staff? Any comments from the commissioners? If not, we're adjourned. Thank you.